Please. For the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Jimmy Bailey, board member. Brandon Bauer, board member.
Ryan Christelli, board member. Chris.
Stephanie Smith, board member.
Jeff Monroe staff. Josh Cole, guest. Andy Rudy, guest.
Julie Warren staff.
You're going. That's Micah.
Fine. Say your name.
Micah Joe.
Thank you, Micah. Okay, roll call is done. Approval of board meeting minutes for October 11, 2022.
I move for the approval of board meeting minutes for October 11, 2022.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Make a motion. Do you have consent agenda? Do you have consent agenda? Yes. Okay, consent agenda.
I'd like to move that we amend the discussion items in the agenda.
I'll second that.
By amend, we're just meaning in the order in which we're going to do them tonight because we have someone running late for presenter.
We would like to move the Board Policy Governance 2000 Series under number C, our board opening. And then I moved the long-range facilities up to the first item on our discussion items. If we have the motion, I think we're just.
So, so we have, so we have the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Approved? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Wow. Wow. Okay, consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Now I'll have to abstain.
I'll second that.
An emotion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? I'm opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry for making that confusing. Okay. So, we're gonna move down to, do you wanna do the? Are we gonna do discussion items, Mr. Smith, to board opening?
Let's do the long-range facilities.
Okay.
First.
All right.
Then, Micah, do you have the, I can share if you cannot. I can go ahead. Micah, don't worry. I already got it. It's okay. Actually, I need you to go ahead and allow me to share my screen, Micah, and then I can pull it up. And while we're doing that, I'm gonna ask Jeff Monroe has been leading in Long Range Facilities Committee of community members. It's kind of a big shift in our long-range facility plan where in past, the district would make a recommendation. It's we did an all-call, really try to drive a community member, community member support for our community to kind of say, this is really what we need from our district. And this is the result of the long-range facilities work of our community. So, go ahead and I've got it going. So with that, I turn it over to Jeff. I mean, Jeff will turn it over, introduce his team.
All right, so I brought a couple of representatives from the committee. I have Josh Collette here. And Andy Rudy and Mike Williams. They're part of the group. We had pretty good turnout. We reached out in many different fashions to get as many people involved as possible. And just the process was, was good. We had, we had been going through this for like six months through the summer. And people showed up. So it was really good to get the support. And I have a little presentation on kind of how we came about our recommendation. Proceed with that. Let me talk about them. I'm sorry. Let me talk about them.
Sure. You can go ahead and pretty much cover.
So, yeah, we had, we had 38 members. We reached out to as many people as we can. I know like our first meeting, we had a lower than expected turnout. So I, you know, began kind of really beating the drum. And every person that I asked, I asked them to recommend another person, kind of deal, just kind of build it that way. We did some social media stuff. So we ended up with 38 members, which ended up being a pretty good representation of all of us. So, yeah, and just the whole process. Things were brought up and thought of that I didn't imagine that we would come to those conclusions. So it was a really good process and the experts that we had helping us through the process really made everything go smoothly. So it was really, really informative and, and just an overall good process.
Yeah, so I'll just echo what Jeff said there. We had a pretty good representation of the community. Pretty good blend of those folks that have kids currently in the school system and those that, that don't. One thing I noticed with the group too, we had a lot of folks that grew up going through the elementary school system and then folks like myself and Mike that did not. So kind of allowed for varying perspectives on it. And so as Jeff had mentioned, we started this process back in April. Having the consultant present us with a bunch of information for us to kind of process, have. And as we met for five more times after that, continuing to discuss the information, formulate some ideas and refine our specific needs to what we're gonna recommend today. And, and again, just kind of an emphasis on, it was a, it was a very data-driven process. There was a lot of evaluation of data. It wasn't just us getting in a room saying, hey, we should do this, we should do that. There was the data backing a lot of the conversations that took place. Next slide.
Yeah, this is just a summary of some of the data that we used throughout the process. We looked at a lot of different things. One of the key components that we looked at was the enrollment projections versus capacity. That was a key focus throughout all of our meetings. Just kind of nutshell version. What we determined from the data was that the high school has room for growth and expansion, but both the elementary and middle schools are in dire need of expansion just due to, due to our projected growth over the next few years. We also looked at utilization currently, as well as the condition of all three campuses and the cost of approving each of those. Just, and these are all based on budget numbers, nothing's, there's no full design, anything like that. This is all based on budget projections prepared by our consultants. As a final step, we used the online forums, a thought exchange, just to present it publicly so that we give feedback for the community to see what kind of support we had.
And how well did that thought exchange go?
We felt that it was in line with, with what our recommendations.
And your, your feedback was in, not just in quality, but in numbers?
I think, I think when it comes to a lot of that stuff, you could, you could always say you wish there was more.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
I mean.
Where their, their sentiment was pretty much echoed. Everyone was.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Everything was positive.
Good.
Just since, yeah, just seeing the results was, you know, with it being open-ended, it didn't just kind of sway the responses.
That's nice.
One way or another.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of identified areas where there was, where there was actual agreement versus like, it's not like a yes or no.
Yeah.
Response. And then just kind of, I think he covered some of the outcomes that we're looking at. Naturally, we need growth in capacity for the elementary schools. Concern is having to address growth in student enrollment with portables. And then, one of the, one of the big discussion items we had was, well, if you expand, if you expand the building capacity for the elementary school, do you have it on the existing, do you add it on the existing campus or add it on a different piece of property? It's pretty resounding. We'd like to keep the elementary kids on the same piece of property. And then, one of the other items, which I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing about is when it comes to the parent drop-off pickup line. So in the design, incorporating something that relieves the congestion. Middle school, from the information that's presented to us, the middle school is already stuffed to the gills. So there's a need to address capacity and then middle school, high school. A need to improve specialty play, specialty spaces, like at the high school, the CTE facilities. And then naturally, naturally, to make accommodations for some of those improvements would be moving the track and the athletic field over to the property over here behind the, behind the transportation building. And then, I think I already touched on it, just addressing the, the community needs, adding athletic space would be moving it out here versus doing something in the existing location. Next.
And then Josh said that, that also the, the additional building would happen, gym as well.
Gymnasium, yeah.
So we're getting into the time of year when people start to fight for gym space for basketball. So it's always been an issue.
So, a committee's recommendations broken into three main areas. The first one being this upper elementary school. And we decided this would be best suited to split it to fourth to sixth grade level. And this was something the group felt pretty strongly about, that that would also be better for the sixth graders to be paired back with the fourth and fifth rather than seventh and eighth graders. And that also resolves the capacity both at the elementary and at the middle school levels by, by bringing sixth grade back to that elementary campus. The second component is a track and field, stands and parking area back in the year that we talked about. This will hopefully resolve the parent pickup space. It's been constantly complained about working together. The third component is just general improvements to the learning spaces at all three. And details aren't finalized, but we looked at, we discussed all sorts of different options. We looked at things such as security, classroom space, kitchen facilities, all those types of things. So within our, within our recommendation, we have money allocated for improvements in those types of areas at all three campuses.
I'm sorry, Mike, I feel like we're leaving you out. Do you have anything?
I was all you're doing just fine.
All right, all right.
I'll type in if I need to.
Okay, awesome.
Go to next slide there. So, this is a preliminary view of what this would look like. So as you can see, up to the northwest where we are now is the new track, field, stadium area. The parking lot would be due north and the new fourth to sixth grade buildings to the, basically due north of where the existing elementary is. This is what we felt was the best value as far as utilizing existing property owned by the school district. I know there's been a lot of controversy from prior levies over whether to rebuild a stadium at the, at the existing location of the high school. The determining factors seem to be flood insurance. It just didn't, it wasn't feasible at that location. So that was why we decided that it just didn't make sense to try to spend a lot of money for something that wasn't insurable. So. Yeah, go ahead. Next slide.
Last one. So when it comes down to the, to the fun part, the part that people start clutching their chest over. So if we were to move forward with, with a, with a bond levy, by the time we go through the design phase and everything, we'll connect construction costs in, in 2025, which would be a total of about 66 million. Or the bond cost would be 275 per thousand. So if you have a property that's assessed at 300,000, that would be 825 bucks added to your taxes. And then we'd also like to know, just in case you're wondering, if we were to remove the field and stadiums from this, it would go from 275 per thousand, $2.09 per thousand. So in reality, we're talking, what, 66 cents? And then our last slide is just, just acknowledging that we didn't do this on our own and we had a lot of help from some really smart people. So, that being said, any questions? So the current fields out here that are used for soccer, would those would obviously be taken up by a new upper elementary? So then, but we would have the space at the high school and the middle school for those fills, since the games are gonna be here? Or is that?
That's kind of what I, yeah, and we'll, and we'll get into that once we, right. Like if we, if we get the funding, we'll be able to design it how we want. But, yeah, kind of one of the neat things, I was at a South Bend, watching my kids play football this weekend. And they, they really, they have a turf field and the tracks, kind of like the field inside the track is wider than a football field. So there's almost a spot on the end where you could have a youth, like a small field. And then also, they had like a baseball diamond in the corner. And we've kind of talked about like this multi-use field. And then also, once, now, once you go to turf, right now, we don't let people practice on Davis Field because it will become a mud fit. All teams will be able to have the chance to practice on there, like with scheduling and stuff like that. So, which will give them a competitive advantage to actually practice on the surfaces that they're mostly playing on.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Are you good?
Would this space still be available up here?
Yes, it did. Yeah. And like I say, we,
Oh, that's a big space.
You can just move how the soccer fields are aimed. We could, there will definitely be room. And I'm sure, you know, if we partner with the city parks department to get, you know, youth sports in this town are huge. It's just like the biggest thing that we have going in this town. So definitely, it will, there will be a transition period. We'll have to work with the city to maybe use some of their spaces while we're in that construction space.
So stop me if I was wrong, because I just kind of go back to that last August meeting. My understanding was, is it would, the, the footprint design would impact the one field. But then it would allow for expansion to link up for that field, kind of in that hybrid area on the, the, the north end of the parking lot. So then that field would be able to be made up and then it would actually bring in almost all the field. So really wouldn't lose any fields. It would just bring all the community fields at one location.
Yeah, we'll, we'll actually, and then we will gain fields.
Right. I just didn't realize that our property actually extended as far as it did that way, you know?
Yeah.
And, and looking in relation now where the new upper elementary would be, that would take up one field, but.
Right.
Looks like it was still not to be affecting other fields.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in talking to Jeff's points, what the city, going through this process, I was like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna complete a grant application and see if we can get some long-range planning for parks and recreation for this community. The last one was done well over 20 years ago. And it only makes sense to, if not partner with the school district, have the park, have the school district have, you know, a, a very big input on it. Because we're not gonna get any more land to expand park space. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get very industrious in how we use our spaces. Not only for our kids, but even, even our adults for recreation spaces.
So this would have a net gain on fields. Because what you're not seeing pictured there is you're not seeing the soccer fields. It would impact one soccer field to the north of the elementary school. It would open up more space to the north of the parking lot, but the also other, the current other fields. So there would end up being a, a net positive impact on field accessibility. So I think that was one of the big concerns was having a, like a single field, right? That had pretty restricted, that would have restricted access versus, we didn't really want, we wanted something, the community wanted something that was reflective of the entire community need from the age grade, from young kids all the way up.
And then, could you go back to the slide and show the projected numbers or whatever? One thing I wanted to note was the escalation. So like, the best time to do a project like this would have been yesterday, right? So if we, if we wait another five years, that same project is near 80 million. So, and that's kind of, I, I know it's a big ask, but it's kind of going for everything at once. If you only say, we only did the school, you almost guarantee for 20 years, we're not gonna be able to do anything else. And so that's why we kind of put everything together is to just go for it. It's a big ask on the community, but I think that, I think the community would benefit from it. I think we need to invest in ourselves. And we just kind of need to get that message out that we want to move forward as a town and stuff like that. So the big, the big, the big deal is like, everything can be built at the same time. It's not gonna impact school. So you don't have to like only do it in the summer, things like that, that other districts deal with. And then, just getting it done as soon as possible. That way the costs don't just go off the charts. So it's kind of our big.
Same, to rephrase, I think a big question was, is, well, a stadium three years ago, cost X amount, Y so much more. And that inflation you're seeing on home prices also goes on, you know, compounding interest is great when it's on your, your investment account or in your bank account. Compounding interest is not great when you're talking about inflation. And what Jeff's pointing out is, is this is what the cost of the inflation rate would be. So the common trend is, is the best time to build is yesterday. If you can't do it yesterday, you want to get, because when we're looking at this current market inflation rate, it's just gonna make things continue to grow and we're gonna build in the current market inflation. And again, that's kind of a decision for our community. I mean, I think there's been a lot of questions online, like we want to have this space, we want to have this space, we want to have this space, why is it so expensive? Well, it's really inflation and it won't go away. So that if we have to go back and ask again, the next time it'll cost more, and then the next time it'll cost more, not because we're trying to work prices. It's just that's what prices do. They, they go up.
I just wanted to comment on something Josh said regarding the facility being, the whole development being done, not just through the lens of our students, but the community at large, even our adult population. And I, I just think it's an important piece not to lose. It's not going to significantly change the cost. If we partner with the city, probably this isn't going to drop the cost significantly. But also in light of all the Blue Zones work that Summit and the community is working on at large. It just feels like this is an important piece to walk through with a collaborative lens of what builds the best for our community at large. Of course, we're looking at this through the lens of our students, but a strong, healthy community that serves the whole community still makes a better community for our kids. So Josh, thanks for just kind of mentioning the reminder that this is, whatever we do, if we partner well, it has the potential to benefit more than just our students.
I echo her sentiments. Actually, I wrote that down. I thought that was a wildly important point to make.
Tell the committee you looked at it too. I mean, we've looked at it.
That's wonderful. Yeah.
I don't get all the hurt.
I, I just, I just heard you say it in your, your presentation, Josh, but yes.
So having that be a, a community focus, I mean, obviously that speaks pretty loudly of what people are wanting.
The other thing that was, for me, that was interesting about the process is almost all these decisions were made on statistics and data. Not somebody's wish list or somebody's, you know, it was almost exclusively based on, on what the data said, what statistics were. So it's truly what the community needs for future, I think.
Now, what was not included is we kind of hit the projected, when we start going to our district enrollment reports, we hit the projected enrollment rate a little quicker than planned. We had a 10% increase in enrollment this year. We're up 160 FTE. The district is over 1,600 students. So we are now out of classrooms at the elementary school and we are, we are out of classrooms at the middle school. So, so the district will be making plans to either, A, use that space for expanding elementary, or the district will need to have a plan to begin purchasing portables. And we'll have to begin installing portables out the back of the elementary school regardless. So it's, it's, we're gonna have to make it, we, we will this spring, based upon what the community decides, begin the portable installation process or begin.
What's the depreciation of?
Portables don't retain value. You are, you are in about 300 grand on an engineering site study just to install a portable. And since we have to pay prevailing wage on the construction of a portable, I think that's the one big concern too, is community members are just like, you know, I can buy a modular home for a certain price, but modular homes are not built at prevailing wage. So prevailing wage, so it really gets down to, is it a wet portable, is it a dry portable? So wet portable, did we run plumbing out to the facility? The students have to run across the parking lot. You probably will want wet portables. And then that means we have to have sewer and electricity ran out to that spot. And then the state now new restrictions require engineering site study before you can replace the portable. So regardless, the district is gonna have to make a rather large investment, whether it's to be portables or permanent student housing. But we are, we've had the largest percentage, the largest growth rate in the educational, in the entire E S T. So we've grown a lot, 160 FTE.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have any more questions. I mean, that was wonderful information. Thank you, everyone, for, I know that this has been a long, arduous journey. And I know that, that there have been things hashed out and rehashed and looked at. And I know it takes a lot of time and consideration. And I just want to thank everyone that's here and out in our community that gave of themselves to enrich the ideals of what we can move forward in our community. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing. I, you know, everybody stretched thin with their time and I'm just grateful that there was 38 people that came together to give up their time in order to look at our community as a whole and decide, you know, what was needed to make our community better. You know, because all too often, we've heard lots of things over the years and it's like, oh, the school district's trying to do this or that. And, you know, they feel like we're forcing stuff down their throat. And so we've actually took a, kind of a hands-off approach to that and put it in the hands of, of you as a community member to look at the long-range plan. And so thank you for your time and we'll definitely have to, it's gonna help us deter, help us make a decision on how we want to proceed in the future, very near future.
Could I ask a question? I, I'm just speculating that if this is the first time this is kind of being released, that there's a chance that some people could hear all of a sudden, you know, via the communication network, holy cow, there's this thought of $66 million. Whether they were up for it or against it, is there still an avenue for people to give input through that, that survey? Or, you know, if people had some thoughts in relation to this, is there any place for them to, I'm gonna say, just constructively provide it?
We can remake live. What I will say though is, if the decision of the board is to pursue a bond, we would need to have two board actions. So they would both need to be in our November board meetings. We're also not seeking board action tonight, because if we do need to do another study session or a community forum, if you'd like us to run a community forum for the community to ask questions, we can begin planning a community forum kind of leading into the next board meeting next week. We could even do a community forum leading in like, just before the next board meeting. So if there is a recommendation or further discussion on a study session on what these elements would include. One thing we did not include in this process is the, generally what you'll see in your traditional bond process is the district will pay an engineer, they'll design an architect, they'll create a design, you put pictures that is the, the design everywhere. That process wasn't done, and I'll tell you why. You actually have to redo the architectural drawings after passing a bond. It's about anywhere from $75,000 to $100,000 to have the architectural drawing done. And it's almost a lost $100,000. It's $100,000 you spend because you know that you want your community to see, like we have this planned elementary school. You want your community to see said elementary school to, you know, to, to garner community support. That wasn't done either. I mean, that, it wasn't done because it, it would be bluntly be a wasted $100,000. We'd have to re. That wasn't done either. I mean, that it wasn't done because it would be bluntly be a wasted hundred thousand dollars. We'd have to re-spend the hundred thousand dollars. So for us, it makes more sense to actually be much more lean and much more cost effective on what can we. What can we design? So there isn't a design, but Stephanie, we can. And I want to kind of put that out there, but we can run another, we can move forward to the community forum. I think that's what we're looking for tonight is we're seeking your recommendation on where we do like to go from here. Or even if it's just, I just want to sit on this, digest it and read through it later.
I don't know about you guys still, but it might help them to have some of that data and stuff that we use. To make our decisions. I don't think any more meetings is going to change the decisions about what's best.
I, I think the facilities committee, we're confident in our decision. I mean, we, we hashed this out. I mean, it was. It was, we had brainstorming sessions. We did all kinds of things. We looked at the data. We know it's a big ask. We know it might not pass, but we also know we don't have to redo the planning process. Like we're confident, like. You know, people may be upset with the dollar amount, they may be upset with whatever, but at the end of the day. Our elementary is overcrowded, our middle school is overcrowded. This is a way to solve both those problems and then. You know, to be on par with. Every school district in the country, you know, to have a field that's adequate and safe for our kids to play. And us to be able to enjoy them and have a community gathering place. I, I feel like. The consensus of the group was. We are good with our plan. If there's some hesitation or wanting to wait, we understand that we, you know, we'll go with that, but. You know, we. All I'm saying is we had a lot of chances for people to do some.
Definitely know what you're saying.
Done a lot of work.
We've looked at every thought and idea that was presented in that, in those rooms.
Correct.
We didn't put anybody's idea or thought, you know, we didn't say, no, we looked at it, analyzed it, talked about it. Through all those discussions, I think.
And it's just, you know, as a. A board, you know, clearly we're a little gun shy because, you know, we. You know, when it came to a, you know, facility for stadium in the past. There was talk about that. We, ultimately I looked at that we wasted close to a hundred thousand dollars running a, you know. A bond for the stadium that just never came to fruition. And there was. We kept hearing that, oh, we got all this support and it didn't happen, you know, and it just didn't, you know, I think that. For me, I know based on the data, I know what the numbers are. I know what the reality is. But trying to get that to our community is going to be paramount so that they truly understand this isn't. Some trickery that we're trying to expunge money out of our community. That is not necessary, that truly. Our community needs this and we're at the breaking point that. Something's got to give and it's, we'll keep doing a Band-Aid fix and. Then we're just throwing good money after that, but.
I'd say that's why we're here where we're at. We've been relying on Band-Aid for twenty and thirty years.
Correct.
And I'm of that opinion too. I mean, I understand the talk about temporary buildings and whatnot. And I say temporary buildings and the respect that that's what a portable is. I mean, I think by the time you do a build out and everything, you're, you're north of a million dollars for one potentially. And I understand the position we're in solely from, from the aspect of enrollment. It's massive. It's not going to slow down. Our community is bustling and bursting at the seams already. And I think it's not easy, but when was the last full school build out? Was the high school?
Yes.
I mean, I know that we were a part of second class. It's been a while and it's the reality of the situation, you know. And I, I wholeheartedly am picking up everything you're putting down. I too share the hesitation with. Ryan and it is coming from this, the, the standpoint that we came into the board on the heels of a lot of things not. You know, going so well, but this is, I mean, obviously there's a need, the need is it's screaming in our face. For our children and for the future going forward, this pays it forward. So much. And you're right, now is the time to strike. We should have struck a while ago. But if we can at all take advantage of what we have right in front of us. I know that that needs to be solidly given to the public. The community needs to have some responsibility in making this decision. And obviously that's why you guys are here. This is the voice of, of the community and I agree with you. I know that we could open some feedback links and all of these things. But decidedly so. The opportunity was presented and has been going on for months. And I think that you're right, Mike, we will land in the same position. This is in our face and we have to deal with it.
And I, and I just think we're a community forum when we come in. The process is once a decision, if a decision's made to move forward on a bond. Then having community forums to provide that information about our enrollment and the other data that you. At the community group had examined to show. To, to prove to people basically to say, hey, this is the data we looked at and this is why we need what we need.
Well, I personally think the process itself is important. The fact that it went to the community, it wasn't. It wasn't staff, it wasn't the board that came up with the solution and said, hey, this is what we're doing. And then, yeah, Jeff went to an extensive effort to recruit people to do this.
There's a, there's a lot of door knocking and begging. We really wanted to get a lot of people that were against.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody like me who's unbiased, I've only lived here a year and a half. I don't have any kids in the school system. I'd be tired. But what I've heard from people I've met and I've talked to, the biggest challenge we're definitely going to have in my opinion. Being unbiased about this whole thing, there's something about a stadium. That seems to be the thorn in everybody's side. I don't think it's the school so much. I think it's. It's the stadium and I don't know what the history is on all that, but that seems to simply be the first thing that pops up when the subject is brought up about a new school. Try to feel it's something, because that's what I've experienced. Not knowing anything about the community or for the history or anything like that, so.
And, and, and I, Mike, you make a good point. I think we have a big concern of that overshadowing the fact that our elementary or middle school are bursting at the seams.
And that was heavily discussed throughout the process too. You know, we had several people that were, that were involved in the prior bond stuff that were. We debated that back and forth throughout the whole. Process. And that was part of the reason why we arrived at the decision to run everything together. We felt that people were against the stadium might be on board with the school expansion. That's something that can't really be argued based on statistics. And, and vice versa, we felt that if we didn't include the stadium, we'd have those that were for it. Going away from it.
So your recommendation as a group, the consensus was that it needed, it needed both. The, the athletics piece and the school piece in order to. But be a good middle ground for our community. It would take care of both needs and a lot of. Desires and, and wants of our, our community at large.
I think again, athletic events, athletic events and I don't know what that is. That's where most of us come together. Most of our interactions with one another stem around the school district.
I, I just have just a question real quick. So looking at this, help me out. If this all goes through, we run a bond and it passes. Are we looking at it being completed in twenty five, twenty twenty five? So that would cost us sixty six million or is the reality that it could be?
That's when construction would begin.
Is in twenty twenty five?
So that's when you would finish your bidding, right? Because you would, you're running a bond in February of two thousand twenty three. You would need to sell your bonds. You'd have to secure a project manager and then you would actually go into your bidding work where you'd have to actually bid out all of the work and bidding out the work and then doing the site preparation can take about a year. Then you would be able to begin, actually begin construction in twenty twenty five. And, and that's part of the reason why a lot of these bonds, a lot of construction bonds are so expensive. Is because of running a bond, right? Then you're securing the bond and we have to secure our debt. So. School districts have a credit rating, just like you have, everybody has a credit rating. And then that would secure our interest rate. So we would have to move from passing of the bond to securing our interest rate. And then our interest rate would actually dictate, because we don't run a bond at sixty six million, we run a bond at two seventy five per thousand. If we have a great credit rating, which we do. That would mean that more of that two seven five, two, two dollars and seventy five per thousand would be. Money for the bond. If we were a district with a bad credit rating. It would mean that two seventy five per thousand would be going through interest and we wouldn't get.
As much.
As much money to do a bond. But because we've had no debt service for so long, we have a great credit rating. So then you have to get your credit rated. Go from getting your credit rating to figuring out exactly with your credit rating, what is your interest rate? And then we would secure our interest rate. And that's also another one of those reasons for a sixty six million dollar bond or two seventy five per thousand. Is it's, we would have to, we'd have to do a construction at, at a, at a current interest rate. But school districts can refinance. Just like, you know, so the big question goes is, are you better off waiting for interest rates to go down? Well, no, I mean, if someone was going to ask you the same advice on a house, I mean, a lot of this just comes down to traditional mortgage advice. It would be, you'd still be better off doing something now and then refinancing when the interest rates go down, because when interest rates go down, the prices could go up.
Christopher, I would argue that. There are ways to procure projects that is, that can be quicker than twenty twenty five. And that's where you need to. Come together again, think outside the box, be creative. And try to get the job procured before twenty twenty five. So you can save some money. There are some very creative ways now to, to procure these jobs and start them early and. There are ways to do that. I did it my whole career. So. You know, that's, that's my concern is this thing drifted the other way to the right, which is what they tend to do. So you need people that are going to stay on top of it and make sure that it doesn't drift past twenty twenty five.
You're, you're a hundred percent correct. And again, this is built out on worst case scenario.
Right.
I mean, because the worst thing you can do when a bond is run out of money. So. Bluntly, this is ran at what is the worst case situation? If we struggled securing bids, if things slowed down, if it took us longer to sell the bonds, because. You're going to be wrong one of two ways. When you're trying to forecast this, you want to mitigate how wrong you are as much as possible. But the absolute worst thing you can do is run out of bonded money to finish the project and then you have a half finished elementary school.
Well, my biggest fear within is architects and engineers' estimates.
Yes.
I've been doing this my whole life and I'll, I'll tell you what they're worth. So that's a huge. That's one of my concerns is that.
Fortunately, at this point, that's all we have to go off of. We can't get any better than that. And I, and I believe, at least from my experience, I believe these are pretty conservative estimates. I think to kind of echo what you said, I, I believe that there, there are means of getting a project moving sooner, but you have to start right away too. Because there's things that, you know, even like permits, environmental studies, that type of thing that can hold things up for six months real easily, you know, but just time must truly. There's a lot of things that I wonder if the key is that if this, if this does pass, it needs to get jumped on right away.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the work that was put into this. I, I'm quiet here. I'm hesitant. I think I. Reflect on some of the things that Brian had said. We got to sell it to the community and I'm. Concerned about that.
But we can put this on for the next, next board meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee.
Yeah. We're going to do the board opening and then I will introduce our. Jeff, I want to thank you. You're in your team. You did an incredible job.
Yeah, good stuff. Good stuff. Really good stuff. Okay, so you want to hop in and do your board opening?
We, we have a, a, for personal reasons, we had a, our district one board rep, Ms. Jody Thompson has. I'm needed to resign her board position. And we're going to need to, it's going to be the board search. We are. Wanted to take a moment to really thank a board member, Thompson, for her contribution to this school district board and. You know, and she's just been an invaluable member to our board. Kind of want to take a moment to thank Jody for her time. And then also we needed to, we are looking for direction. It doesn't require action. We just need to have direction to begin pursuing filling the Quake and Board position.
My position is, is I'd like to wait until after the holidays and to January. We've got a lot of things going on right now. I don't think it's fair to try to find someone in haste. I would like to give it its time that it's due. And so that is my personal preference. At this time.
I would agree with that. My only question would be is can we open it and have a closing of January?
We have ninety days to fill the position from the date we receive the letter of resignation.
So I mean, if we were to open it now, people could start putting in.
We could.
Interest or whatever, and we wouldn't make a decision on anything or look at anything until January.
Yeah, we would need to do interviews for a new board member, probably at our first board meeting in January. For an appointment. So what we could do is we can leave the position open through the holiday season. Collecting applications. And then we could be scheduled for interviews. Interviews will need to be public.
Yes.
So we could do those as part of our January board meeting or as part of their own.
I'd like to do it as a board meeting. I think that's appropriate. People are prepared for that and we're not going to consume more of their evenings. And that would be January tenth.
Yes, I think so. Not on January.
It'd be actually a special board meeting.
Before the regular.
Either have a, based upon the number of applicants, it could be a special board meeting before or after. So we are back to Wednesdays. This is our last Tuesday board meeting.
Okay, so that would be January eleventh.
So it'd be Wednesday, January eleventh would be the board meeting that we would, if we had it connected to, it could have to be.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we might wait until December to decide how we'll advertise that based on the amount of applicants.
Okay.
Because I think Centralia School District just did this and they had seven applicants. And I think that was about thirty minutes per applicant, so it was about three and a half hours of interviews.
Okay, fair enough.
So if we have three and a half hours of interviews, we might want to give it its own board night.
Sure. Thank you.
I think that would be an awesome problem. To have that many people.
I agree.
Participate. So I would be willing to give up an extra night if we had seven people who all wanted to serve in that capacity.
Well, there's a lot of people in our community that has ideas. So I mean, it, it, it would be nice if, you know. They would throw their hat in the ring and, you know, and join in the decision-making process.
Can we get something out fairly soon that just gives the specifics about Jody's district, kind of the boundaries?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's one of the confusing pieces for people.
I agree. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we can totally get that out. We can get a map out and begin advertising the space, the zone. I mean, it is, actually it's the area where I live. So. So this position does open up. I guess it's somebody I could vote for.
Yeah, I think it's something that some people don't realize that they may want to serve on the board, but they have to be able to live within that district that they'd be serving in. So. That makes our applicant pool a little bit more difficult, I think.
It does, it does. I think getting an advertisement out and getting an advertisement out on where. And in our school district, this boundary is, this is district one. So it's the eastern edge of our school district. And it kind of covers both sides of the highway and runs all the way to the top bend of the qualum. And over Bush Creek area. So that's our district one border boundary. So I, I agree. I think we can begin working with the D and getting this advertised ASAP. And then just with a posting date on planned interviews for the second week of January. We'll leave it more open on the second week of January based upon the number of applicants that we might have.
Okay, perfect. That works.
Do we want to set a closing date?
For applications?
Yeah.
Yes, at the next board meeting. Can we discuss closing dates at the next board meeting?
Yes.
Advertising itself?
Yeah.
Okay. We can get to work on that. So with that, I would like, so as we know, the Elma School District is, you ready to hop the next one?
I sure am. Yep.
Uh, we have engaged in a mastery-based learning initiative. This is a new, um, Washington Administrative Code, um, under the State Board of Education. Um, it's by one eight oh five one oh five one, which gives school districts the ability to, actually gives school districts the ability to award credit based upon what students have learned. And it really is the cornerstone on a district, you know, a statewide initiative that, um, education is really about the students and what the students can do. Um, we have enlisted the work of Peter Crocker, and this is, uh, Harry and Martin Morris. Um, he's actually coming here to begin our work, uh, even though state, state law or state administrative codes provided us a lot of freedom or a lot of regulation for school districts to do this work. We don't necessarily have board policies that align to what the state laws say. And we, as of such, we are beginning a two thousand series board policy review. And, uh, I'd like to introduce Harry Martin Morris as our expert who is leading this work with our district.
Of course, I'm not an expert. And I'm sorry, on Zoom, I didn't know that there was gonna be a Zoom person, so I didn't give Chris a copy of invitation.
Can I screenshot it real quick for you and send it?
I'll just listen closely.
It'll, it'll be up on the screen, so you'll be able to see.
Perfect, okay.
That's fine.
He's already got it.
Stephanie, I'm gonna hand it up to you.
Perfect.
So, uh, I hope you don't mind me sitting here.
No, you're good.
Say fine.
Um, so, uh, as Chris said, my name's Harry Martin Morris. I'm with Peter Crocker. Among the several hats that I wear. I am a former school board member, eight years since Seattle Public Schools, which means probably equivalent to twenty in Elma. Just because of the things that go on in a given year. I also am vice chair of the State Board of Ed, as well as vice chair of the Charter School Commission. Uh, so, uh, and in my spare time, uh, I, I do this, this kind of work, you know. So I've been in education for over twenty years, started out as a kindergarten teacher. Best job I ever had, uh, and then evolved into all kinds of, of, of other things. I wanted to also, you know, as Chris was talking about mastery-based learning. Elma's in a unique position in that you're doing this district why? Nobody else in the state is doing that. What that means is, especially when it comes to policy, most of the policy that is existing out there on mastery-based learning is all about issuing credit for second for high school. It's silent on, well, what about elementary school? What about middle school? What if you're taking a course and it's not earning credit? And so that's where, uh, as we were talking, he says, oh, we really need to fill that hole. As it turns out, uh, so I was in contact with Wasta saying, do you guys have a policy? And a model policy? They go, no, we're thinking about it. And I go, well, you have all these policies about earning credit for earth science and foreign language and all the, you know, it's all my content area, but nothing global. So, you know, part of what I want to talk about today, um, is, you know, what we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna have a quick overview, because this is where the work that the district is doing and the policy work that the board needs to do really starts to align. Well, so I wanted to go through and, and do a little bit of refresher. You probably know a lot of the stuff we're gonna talk about initially, about rules and responsibilities. But I think it's always a good idea to kind of level set everybody, cause not everyone always understands the same thing. And we're also gonna talk about the mastery-based learning part. Not in real depth, but just kind of a list of some of the key elements, such, you know, as you develop those policies. And since policy is the what, and you say to Chris, go do this what, and you monitor the what. It's actually pretty simple when you think about it, but it's hard too. Uh, and then we'll talk about the whole, the policies. Uh, I've done an analysis of which policies need to be updated, which policies need to be brand new. And the implication for one policy that kind of snuck in there and you have a policy on grading, while mastery-based competency-based learning this doesn't line up with everything else, especially all the stuff that we learned last week, uh, going to Denver about quote-unquote grades and what that means in a competency-based, uh, learning. So I have this picture here, because I always use this to level set people, to remind them why we do what we do. Cause of those kids right there. And I love this picture, because I'm looking at the intensity on those kids' faces. You know some good learning is going on there. You can see it in their faces. And so all of this that we're doing is for that. That's why I don't start with the, the why. So competency-based learning, this is kind of the, and we showed this to, in the summer institute that we ran, uh, here in Elma in August, and it just kind of lays out for you, and I'm not gonna read all those, it's an eye chart anyway. But there's some key ones in there. Number two, I always like to draw people's attention to, you know, that this work is, is equity-based work. Because if I'm, the whole idea of equity is getting students what they need when they need it. I mean, if you're doing that, then you, you have equity. And so it, it's no more complex than, than that, at least for me personally. And then number five, you know, that all students must be challenged in the work that they do and be able to be supported to do some deep learning in, in things. And competency-based learning is all about that. Here's one of those weird places. Uh, you, up here, you see, uh, use the word competency-based. You will also hear it called mastery-based, and they kind of get interchangeable. The grant that you've received is a mastery-based learning grant. To get there, it's all about competency. You know, the idea is, I, the students are showing evidence to the teacher that they have, they know what that is. They have mastered the skill that the teacher has laid out. And then this also allows, this means that educators, and that's number six, are gonna have to be really more innovative than in their assessment. You can't just, you know, give a, you know, bubble test and say, well, they, you know, they mastered that, cause they filled in the bubble. That's not proof. So that's gonna make for recalibration, a real change in the approach. Cause competency-based, while the approach is about how we deliver stuff, it's really about how we assess. It's the assessment piece that's really the heart of everything. And, you know, Chris will be telling you very soon, you know, what's the system that's gonna look like to, to house all of that assessment and all of that evidence and all of those things. We have a plan for that. And it will be coming. But we gotta build up to that first, to get teachers trained. And then, again, the whole thing is that students, and number seven, the students are, need to learn academic knowledge and skills. So it, this is really about skills at its core. Show me that you have this skill. And then what's the evidence of that skill? Because the, in the framework of competency-based, it's all about, uh, student advocates. Students being able to advocate for themselves is really the underpinning of everything that we, that we're gonna be doing. And that's the scary part. Cause you're gonna have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kids running around the, the campuses here advocating for their own education. Now, that seems, that could be scary to some people. To me, I'm excited as hell. I think that's gonna be.
It's an empowering piece.
Yeah. They're gonna take ownership of, of what they're doing. So, you know, it's no longer, the teacher gave me an A or a B. No.
I think we use the language here, um, very often of allowing kids to have the agency over their education, and that's.
And that is core to competency-based education. And that is one of the core guiding principles. And then the, the number eight is the one I love almost the best. Learning happens anytime, anywhere. It doesn't have to necessarily be in the classroom, sitting in rows type of thing. It could be out in some green field somewhere. Learning's happening. You know, so, and competency-based recognizes that. And so for me, that's, that's, you know, kind of really key. I, I had planned, um, to hand out a little worksheet for you that's, I was gonna listen. What did you, what do you think your role is? What do you think your responsibility? And what do you think your authority is? And I do that to get a sense of where you are evolutionarily around being a board. So I will reverse it, and I'll start with Ryan and say, what do you think, what's your role as a school board director?
Uh, one of my roles is to ensure that we have a quality superintendent, uh, in place, so that they're competent and they have a vision to get the best learning out of our, our, educating our students and our district. I'm definitely not. When I first came on the board, just before COVID, I thought that school board actually, members actually had more authority. And they really do.
Okay, but yes.
But they really don't, and, uh, which it makes sense, because, you know, I, I almost look at, we have to be a big picture, uh, group up here. We can't get lost in the day-to-day operations of the district. Even though so many, it's not only a change for myself to learn as a school board member, but also other community members, cause there's always people that want to come to us.
You're the school board, you know, you're in the same way.
And you can fix this. Right. And, and unfortunately, that's not, that's beyond my responsibility and privilege, and so.
And so that gets to one of the key elements of boards and board policy work. You have one employee that you're responsible for, sitting right there. Not the custodian, not the principal, not the secretary, school secretary, just the superintendent. And we'll talk about, that's why policy is so important, because that helps define not only the role, but it gives the superintendent, these are the marching orders. These are the things that we want accomplished. And if we're using policy well, that, you know, that's where, where it should be. That's the lane that y'all should be in. And when boards get into trouble, is when people start dipping in, out of their lane and into the other lane. Believe me, I've seen it more times than I can mention in Seattle. There was a lot of lane diversion going on. What about authority? What, what authority?
I, I mean, I think, uh, the word authority, uh, as it applies here is, we have the authority to, um, make sure that our governments and policies are in place and up to date, um, to, um, to make sure that our plans, strategic plan and otherwise, are in place and implemented, that we, um, lay out for Mr. Nesmith to, um, facilitate through the district. And our authority is not, uh, I, I feel like it's not in the traditional sense of, we're here to say what goes and how. Um, it is, it is a role of responsibility, I feel, is, is the budget and these things. Our authority is to make sure that, I feel like it's internal, if that makes any sense. It's to know what our role and responsibilities are, and that is our authority to make sure that we're acting upon them and making sure things are there in place and set for our policies, our governance.
Yeah, and, and I would add to that to say, and you, you were touching on it, you were dancing around it. You, your authority, you approve the budget.
Yeah.
So you have that control. You approve the curriculum. You know, and I, I get nervous when I use that word curriculum, because people use it in the textbook, but it's much, 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 much bigger than that. But yeah, so those are, those are all good things, and those are right things. And then when you, you know, when you look at effective boards, and you've laid it out perfectly, you know, the community elects you as their representative to provide direction and also to receive input. You know, you are, you know, you're a channeler of what the community wants, which is why they elected. Uh, then you govern this whole big massive thing, you know, through policy. And that's how, how it all gets managed in terms of being clear to the community. Here's the direction we're going. Here's the policy that lays out what that direction is. So I always talk about policy and procedure as being separate things. Superintendent takes care of the procedures. That's how it's gonna get done. You, you tell the superintendent the what's gonna be done. He goes, or she goes, and figures out the how. And you document that. And you have some procedures already out there that are specifically for that, and we'll talk about a few of those when we get to that. And so, you know, superintendent manages all of the leadership and all of those things. Those are the lanes. You say the what, he says the how. And then I, I kind of drew, I wanted to ask you that question about roles, responsibilities, and authority, and lay it out this way. You hit on all of the key points, you know. Our, in the superintendent, job one. You know, only have one employee. That's also part of that, you know, governing through policy that you adopt. And, you know, as, as you know, just heard earlier, the two thousand series, which is the instructional stuff, are the things that you're gonna start marching through. And it's a, gonna be a long slog. It is, you know, you, right now, most of your policies are word for word what Wasta has. I would suggest that you start putting some Elma into those policies. Those policies are written for, you know, they're kind of generic statewide. No one's gonna argue with anything that's there, but it's not always Elma. You know, so you, as, as policymakers, have to start thinking, well, yeah, that's kind of right, but for us and where we are, we need to do something a little bit different. In policy. Don't have to follow what Wasta gives you. Don't have to follow what WASTA gives you. You can write your own and make the product. And as you do this review, you're gonna do the two thousand series, but you should set up a a schedule of when you go through and march through all of your policies over. It's gonna take a couple of years, I'll be honest. In Seattle, when we did it, it took us two years to get through all of the policies. And we had seven people on the board, so it's gonna be even more of a challenge because you have as almost as many policies as Seattle has. So that's a lot of work. So eyes wide. You know, governing through policy is is the key thing that you do. Your fiscal, and we talked about that, the fiscal and the curriculum adoption, that's all yours. And then that last piece of listening to the community. Doesn't mean necessarily that you're gonna do everything you want. But they have to know that they can come to you with concerns, other things, and they won't be shy about that. You know that all too well already. You know, it's hard to go shopping without someone expressing some concern, you know, I call those Safeway moments. Every board member that served for any amount of time has a Safeway moment on a fairly regular basis once. I have two Safeways in my neighborhood and it doesn't matter which one I go to. I still used to get Safeway moments.
Yeah.
Yeah. So uh that's, that's, that's a norm. Um, and then uh as we, as we think about this, you know, setting up the policies themselves, you know, as I said, policies are the what? You know, they should always have that second bullet embody the the board's beliefs, you know, commitments, values and vision. And I would also add that should be reflective of the community's vision as well. And all, and all of those things should be self evident in the policy. Um, one way to do that, and I don't know if you guys have done any work around policy governance at all. Have you done any of the WASTA training?
We have done some WASTA training.
On policy governance?
I believe so. I can't, I came on just before uh COVID and um and we were starting to do some of that. Um, then of course COVID hit and that's kind of shut a lot of things down. Um, and then and that was kind of before Mr. Nesmith was hired as well.
And we, when I came on, we brought in. That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary came on, well, prior to when we when our board all started with five new members all in this year. And so that was um the twenty nineteen, but going into the twenty twenty year. Um, and Mary came in um and we worked on our roles and what the governance was and what policy and procedure and how that works and how it's written and what we have to do and uh what we can change. We started all of that work and then that shifted into starting a vision of what our strategic plan would be, but then COVID.
Yeah. And and you know, Mary's a a personal friend of mine. I mean, we've known each other for fifteen years or something, more than that. Uh, and there's no one better than understanding where she was on her board for almost nineteen years. I don't know why anyone would wanna be on the board for nineteen years. But she in one of the most ethnically diverse neighborhoods um in Puget Sound. And, you know, they speak a hundred and thirty different languages in her district. So imagine trying to run a school district uh with that much diversity going on. So, and she did it for all of that time. Her kids literally moved up, you know, in utero almost while she was on the board and graduated high school off the college.
And that's a thing that just came to me too about, you know, making policies for to educate all children, not just a certain group of children.
Yeah.
You know, and I think all too often as a parent, we always first want to look at our children and what what our children need. Um, and sometimes we lose sight that policies are being made that not just captures your child's need, but all the needs of all children.
And the other part to that is policies aren't static. Just because you have a policy today, five years from now, that policy, you know, because of changes in demographics or changes and how you're even going to do the work could change. And so that means you have to go back and redo or readjust all of your policy work to do that.
And some of the policies I know that we've done before, yes, they are the WASTA recommended policies. And and I think personally for myself, I always looked at those as they were vetted in some way. Um, and so I would I would give my vote for that policy change because of the recommendation from WASTA.
There's something to be said for that. But because, and just because of that very fact though, they don't know ELMA. They they're looking at it in a holistic way.
Right.
And and so while I understand exactly what you're saying, you almost have to look at policies with that.
It makes no sense, but yeah, we should all.
No, yes.
Oh, clearly. You're not, we're not adding IP. So we are still live on our. I don't, everybody's looking at Ryan, maybe me.
So uh I wanted to spend some time to talk about that policy governance piece. That was the thing that you you know, you kind of got to the edge of that when you talked about roles and responsibilities and Mary. But you never got to the next step, which is around, well, yeah, I understand policy, but how do we manage all of that? And there's a really nice framework that a lot of people, a lot of school districts or school boards use uh by this couple, uh John and Mary McHarver. And he, back in the seventies, I mean, designed this model around policy governance. Saying for boards and superintendents to be effective, here are some four quadrant things that have to happen. And with a clearer, and in the diagram that you have on page ten, it kind of shows, you know, what those quadrants are. So, you know, you're the board side is the means and the superintendent side is the ends, looking at the outcomes. You're looking at the oversight and monitoring these and the policy work is to make sure that it's clear where what the limits are that the superintendent has as well as what you have. And see, here's in essence, the lanes that we're gonna stay in. There's our lane, there's a superintendent's lane, and we're gonna hold each of us accountable for for staying within our limits. You know, um, and and I like the idea of looking at it in terms of ends and means and limits and oversight. That's really all your policy should be laying out. You should be able to see those things in any policy that you write. It's a nice way of filtering out to see if your policies are right for you and what you do. And is the glue that keeps that all together and keeps those quadrants separate and those lanes clear are the policies. Uh, which is why I drew it in those tabs, tabsies with the policies as the conduit, conduit between those, all of those quadrants.
So you may not mention that you could write your own policies. It should have ELMA in them. The vision should be there. It should feel like ELMA. Um, this is uh not something that I think any of us knew that we could actually write it. I understand. I mean, it's not been spoken of this way, you know, so to 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 approach it that way, then I would think that we'd have to have some sort of framework to say, this is what it has to include. So there's a guideline. Here, there's layers and this is what it has to include. Um, but this is what we like to see it on. I don't know about the rest of you, but I feel really empowered as a board member to be able to write some policy. I didn't realize that was within our control to not just, I mean, I understand that we can change some or add things to it, but I didn't know that do they all have to be or specific ones have to be a very set way, very boilerplate, or have you just?
Our mastery based learning policy, because we knew we needed to have it in place, is nothing like the WASTA policy. Because the wall, WASTA policy wasn't really reflective of the Washington state law. So that's an example of a policy we have in place that we did kind of go to scratch and write because we didn't have a lot of choice. But then Ryan also makes a really, really great point. And sometimes it's kind of managing the duality of having like, you know, you kind of want this outside agency. They reviewed it. They've had their lawyers vet it. But then it's not really responsive. And I think that's where Harriet was going. It's the the balance of that duality between it's great to use the WASTA policy, but then read it and reflect upon it and say, well, how does this look for ELMA? And um, and I think we're getting to that place when we're looking at Harriet's quadrant, monitors, oversight and accountability. We're really close to having our full data dashboards in place now to actually have some levels of, you know, our data and our accountability. So and we're about really close to launching the, actually Harriet is part of our master based learning work. I mean, honestly, Harriet said it, Mary would have just been, you know, great at the board policy review, but Harriet's also part of our master based learning work. So it made sense to have someone connected to our ma- our 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 specific work to help us through this policy review. So it's, it's as we're getting our pieces in place, now it seems like the right time to begin having the conversations about our policy review because it would have been really hard to do a policy review and then say, but now we don't have a way to be accountable for it. We are close to having our accountability systems all built out.
And and yeah, I, it's funny when you said that, like, you're absolutely right. No one talks to boards that way because everyone wants, well, WASTA was wanting to use their stuff. I'll be honest.
And they usually put on most of the training, so there's.
Right. I I feel like the CFO likes receiving those, I'm sorry. Wasn't CFO was walking out as you were walking.
Again, that's one of those authorities that and I wanted to hi- make sure to highlight that you have that authority. That is totally within your area and no one can say anything about that because it's your policy. It's your district. And you're responsible. So, yeah, go ahead. You know, don't be afraid.
Then clearly, if we write policy to to far outside kind of what I guess we'll call the norm, even though I don't like the word, but we should probably be having legal advice as well, because that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, if you, you know, if you pass the policy that says on Tuesday, every kid has to wear a pink T-shirt, you know, uh, that would, you know, run afoul of many things. But but as as you do your review work, yes, I would always advise that we have uh counsel when we did it in Seattle, you know, it just so happened that our board secretary for us was also an attorney. So it helped us. We we could keep it all in house. And we did also use the district's attorney, but she was the one that was actually guiding a lot of the, a lot of work with us. You know, she could look at it. Those words, you really shouldn't use those words. And here's why.
And and I guess that's what I think a lot of the board here would yeah, sensitive to changing stuff and getting um the district in any trouble because our job is to have a healthy, sustainable district. And by making poor choices, that could end up costing the district. And that's I don't find being a good steward of my role and responsibility.
And while I would agree with that, but I also wouldn't let that put fear in you of doing. Don't let that be an obstacle for you because then in essence, you wind up perpetuating the same systems that you're really trying to get rid of or improve or upgrade.
Right.
And so, you know, as long as you, you as a board have a vision and a belief of as to why you're doing what you're doing. And you document that, you know, this is, we believe this, this is, and this was why we have this policy. I say go for it.
And I think that that helps with the data dashboards is because it has information to back up our vision and why we need to do what we need to do.
Yeah.
And so we're not just, uh, it's not, I'm not making a policy just on my whim.
That has happened. It's not, it's not our time. I have been in districts where there were a few board members that did that. It was not a pretty situation. It did not end well. But, you know, this, this kind of model that Harvard created is is really handy when you start working on doing your policy reviews and start creating either new policies or updating other policies and say, okay, is is all of that clear? Or is something missing? And that, that's why I like it. It gives me that gut check.
Yeah.
If some of those elements aren't there, that tells me that's probably not the best policy for what I want to do. So that, that's why I I go kind of to that. Uh, you know, and we talked about uh the mastery based policies. Right now, they all live in the two thousand series. Really, they kind of started about twenty four hundred down to about twenty twenty, twenty four twenty. Is where most of the stuff is now. Uh, you know, you have policies in there right now around mastery based learning. But like I said, if you, if you look at them, if you turn to page twelve, actually I listed out a bunch of the ones that are there. Uh, so if you start at twenty four, uh uh, well, twenty four oh one is one that you don't have right now because it's so new. Uh, WASTA is still, WASTA doesn't even have a model policy on it, which is a financial literacy. Uh, you will need to have a policy on that because there is, there is a whack about financial literacy and districts providing financial literacy for students. Uh, so you need to have that. Uh, you could wait until WASTA comes out with their model policy for it. I know they're close. They said probably the end of November. So I wouldn't spend any energy until you see what WASTA's come up with. And that's gonna be an interesting one in terms of when you go into competency based learning, what is financial literacy going to look like? And is it gonna be standalone? Is it gonna be integrated in page twelve? Which is the way though, I think the whack is written. I think, is that the new one with that one?
No.
Yeah, I I think that I think it, the way it was said is that it needs to be financial literacy K twelve. But you could also do standalone financial literacy classes.
Oh, I.
I think we're we're required to make financial literacy available for students.
Okay.
And and I will tell you, I was doing some work in Spokane where I was working with high school students. That was the one thing that every group, I talked to probably about sixty high school students in Spokane. That was the one thing they all said they wanted was financial literacy.
And and I've heard that a lot, just. And I and I've heard that a lot just in our community, of people who have gone to the Elma School Districts previously. And they definitely said they would have really could have used financial literacy.
Yeah, so I thought that was fascinating that the students were even asking, you know, they're not afraid of rigor. They're saying, oh, this is, that's relevant to me, and I'm not getting it, and how are we going to get that stuff? I don't want to wind up being a senior and don't know how to, I don't know how credit cards work. I don't know how to even balance a checkbook, you know, I don't know how to apply for a loan, all of those things. So something to think about as as you start thinking of your policy, what, how are you going to deliver on that? Making available piece for students, and so that policy is going to be interesting. The, if you look at two thousand, uh, twenty four oh two down through twenty four oh eight. Again, that's that whole idea, if you look at the language that's being used. It's all about is the idea of.
Valencia Mastery Based Credit and earning credit, which is fine. But mastery base is more than about earning credit.
Right.
And so the the question that has come up at WASTA is has the same question. Well, maybe we should get rid of that word credit and do some language change in the in those things, because mastery base is more of an approach than it is about earning credit. And and you notice that they have, they differ each content area, which is a little bit cumbersome. You know, having, you know, ten different credit earning competency based things based on whether it's social studies or science, you know. I don't understand why, why they did that, and I don't even know if it's necessary to.
I think even in all professions, sometimes it's hard to get certain terminology or thoughts out of them, out of the way. And education has been so much credit driven um for so many years. And it is kind of funny, because when you're looking at mastery based learning, it's actually turning education around to a whole different philosophy than what we are used to.
Sure, and and that's, you know, when I was talking to Chris a while ago, well, back in the summer. They're saying there are lots of examples that competency base has been around for. Because FFA is the best example I have of competency base. I mean, that's always been competency based. You know, and my my father-in-law was the FFA advisor at the high school and, you know, four H County agent and all of that. But that was all competency based. Uh, when I became a private pilot, all of my training, everything was competency based. You know, there there was one graded exam that, because that was the federal government FAA requirement. But other than that, everything else was about show me that you have the skill. And then you move to the next level, to the next level, and after you've accomplished all of those things, you can go uh fly an airplane with an examiner who is also looking that you have all of those skills. And you can demonstrate that's your evidence. You know, there is no eighty percent.
I mean, on here, when it says English Language Arts Mastery Based Credit. If we are, if we're redoing this policy, can we call our policy instead of mastery based credit? Can we call it mastery based achievement?
Absolutely. Yes, you can, those titles are not.
Do watch out, Chris.
Again, the key phrase here is when WASTA sent you those, those were models.
Models, okay.
Right? And so if you in Elma say, you know, we we want to, we'll keep the English Language Arts Mastery Policy. But it's, for us, it's not about credit, it's about skill. And it's about evidence, and it's about demonstrating, it's about advocacy of those students around those. Because that's the other part, how students demonstrate that they have the skill is going to be freaking all over the map.
Yeah, sure.
And that's great. You know?
Know this clearly pose a challenge to educators, you know, like you're saying to how are they going to grade or or evaluate, you know, each student? Because there are so many different ways to uh
Yes.
to determine if achievement was made.
Not, not really. So here's the beauty, and I think we have people in the room that can talk to that. What we're going to be doing here is using something called proficiency scales. And it goes from zero to one to one. Have you decided where it's going to be zero or one yet?
I didn't hear.
Are we deciding we're going to do zero to one?
We haven't hit the second one yet, okay.
So the idea means each one of those levels says, this is the skill that I'm looking for in this particular area. And you can, and what's the evidence that that student has achieved that level? And that's going to be a wonderful thing, because the student, it could be a student putting on or a group is putting on a play that shows evidence that they have gotten the skill. Uh, it could be, you know, the the example that I use the most was when I was in high school, I had to read Cyrano de Bergerac, hated it. Hated it, so I put it off, put it off, put it off, until the end when there was the big exam on Cyrano de Bergerac. And so I had to make a decision, how am I going to learn what I need to know to show that I uh, just so happened that weekend on one of the TV channels, there was a guy named Mr. McGee. They did a, Mr. McGee did a version of Cyrano de Bergerac cartoon. But it got the whole essence of Cyrano de Bergerac, and I aced that exam because of that. So how I got there was totally, I, the teacher did not plan on me watching a cartoon on Saturday night, on Saturday afternoon. I got it, and I understood it. And so I was able to show, give evidence that I understood the themes and and all of the plots and everything in Cyrano de Bergerac. How I got there, doesn't matter. And that's the same, that's going to be where our teachers are going to be at their finest. Because students are going to say, I have mastered this. And here's the evidence that I have mastered it, and the teacher can assess what level of mastery that student has obtained with the demonstration of evidence. And the the nice thing is the feedback, if a student, let's say, a three is is where you want to be, that's, you know, you've done everything that's necessary to show that you have mastered, you are proficient. Right? The teacher may turn around and go, you know, I want to know a little bit more about X, Y, Z. I want you to dig a little deeper for it. That student may do something, say something, or demonstrate something that moves them up even a higher level. Because now the teacher has a reference point to say, I think this kid's capable of more. And you can push them to get that way. Or the student that got, you know, a three and said, you know, I I really, I want a four. What what do I need to do, you know, to get a four on this, on this topic? Right question, I like that question, because then the teacher can say, well, if you do this, 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 this. Here's clear, yeah, and the student says, all right, I'll see you in a day or two, and I'll bring back that evidence that I mastered that at that level. So now how do you, the the question to go, I know it's more mastery based than policy, but you you have to allow in the policy for that kind of freedom. That kind of work to get done, so those are the things that that you have to be thinking about in the policy. Now, what I had done for it, because you're nice people, and Chris asks. Is I I started to rough out what a policy might look like.
You see this, Stephanie?
That's a little bit of a, I didn't pick that one out for you, Stephanie, I'm sorry.
I think Chris, this is what you emailed me.
Yep. He, Chris emailed for the whole packet.
Yeah, I was able, I was able to read it, otherwise I'd have to really these old eyeballs on.
Yeah, no, I did that just as an example. As I said earlier, WASTA doesn't have a policy around mastery based learning that would even be applicable to elementary and middle school. So what I envisioned was a a policy twenty four hundred, which is at the beginning of all of the mastery based stuff, that says, here's, you know, in Elma, this is how we envision, this is our beliefs, this is what we expect around mastery based competency based learning in in Elma. And I although, and you may want to call out specifically elementary versus middle versus high. I I didn't want to dictate those kinds of things, but what I wanted to do was get the belief systems down. The intent of what mastery based competency based learning is. And who's responsible for doing what? And then you can use that as the frame to, and I would be more than happy to work with you guys on framing that all out to make it be reflective exactly uh of what you want. And I know it's the hardest thing is starting with a blank page and saying, what do we do? And I I want to give you something that you could start with and and think about and act upon, but if you notice there there are belief statements in here, it says what your intent is, which is always nice in policy. Tell people what you, what your intentions are for having this policy.
Now, that's what jumped out at me right away about the, where it also allows for parents and guardians to have a clear picture of what their students know and how they apply, so it's really spelling out. But our vision and what we want to see happen.
Right.
And and so, but that also means you can, you you have the accountability to, so you can go to Chris and go, how are we doing that? You know, what does that look like? You know, uh, and he can say, well, it's right here in our, you know, in our dashboard. This lays out what the accountability is, how we communicate with our families. You know, it gives you a really nice check. On, you know, are things being done the way you intend them to be done? And I I saw a lot of stuff at you guys, and I apologize for that, but I think to get you started, I thought it would be good to go through, know which policies, you know, you can focus on. Know what powers you have about those policies and did you frame for the policies that don't exist yet. And I think that, you know, having that overarching mastery based policy is going to serve you very well. Because in essence, even if all those other ones, the, you know, twenty four oh twos and threes get changed, deleted, added to, whatever, this still sits on top of all of that. And and you'll be fine, it'll be good, you'll be, quite honestly, I think you're the only board that's even thought about this. Of all of the schools that are doing this work right now, you and Moses Lake are the only two boards. Just so happens, that's the two districts we work with. There's a coin, there's no coin. But you're, you are the only ones really that are taking on this work, and I commend you for that, because that's forward thinking.
Looking back at the, what policies are impacted, and it has like twenty four oh nine P and then twenty four oh nine. Can you tell me what?
Yeah, so that's because you have, you have a procedure, the P one is a procedure. And that procedure one talks about the world language credit. And then the twenty four oh nine is talking about credit in general for competency. So you, it's kind of, that one is a little unusual, that you have a policy, but that policy is around competency. But then you have a procedure that goes with it, that's really only talking about word language.
Okay.
So procedure needs to be updated, but it it's, it's, we're without the tools yet to launch an efficient procedure, which is why our team is in Denver framing out a tool so we can have an appropriate procedure.
Yeah, so that will be coming, you know.
It's kind of like climbing stairs. You know, it's, it's, we can want it, but then if we don't have a way to do it. So it's what comes first. So we've been adopting a data dashboard. And then we've been building out a um learning management system, so we have a way to show students have demonstrated mastery. So in that way, as board policies are being written, we don't have a policy that can't be done. We have a board policy that we've been building the infrastructure so it can also be done.
I feel like I learned a lot of things, some really valuable, good things. I really appreciate your time. I really know, I know that the educational piece in the classroom for Elma is going to be an amazing change. I know that it's not going to be without our hurdles. And I know that if we're, if we're doing a a really thorough job with these policy and procedure, we will pave the way to have some really amazing learning going on here, and I'm really excited about that.
And and the other part to that is the reason you want to focus on policy is that also will help you in the educating of your community. Because as you're doing this march through, you can start reaching out to them and asking for input and doing all those things, this is coming, we're planning for it, here's what it's going to look like. You know, so you can start doing all of that, using the policies that you can help communicate.
Really good stuff.
We're starting to take shape.
It is. Last summer, it was a little blob, now it's starting to get a form.
I I just, I I'm just excited because I just felt like in the past, we give information to students, but we don't really know to what extent do they fully understand that information provided. And all too often, kids graduate and they really find that they don't have any useful skills or information to be successful in life. And that's what I'm so excited about, is really providing true skills to our students so that they can be successful.
And that's competency based learning at its core, right?
Yeah.
It's about obtaining the skills to help you move to the next level after you leave.
Well, and I believe that with this type of learning model for our students to be able to demonstrate what they learn, it it just by nature demands that they be actively engaged in that learning, and they actually learn it, not just master it uh uh by taking a test and showing mastery, they literally are proving this. And we all know as adults, this sticks, this stays with us. And I don't know about everyone else, but I'd sure like to know that a majority of the education my children are getting sticks with.
And, and, you know, as you think about, and you have that with profile of the graduates.
Yeah.
Right? You're saying, here's what we want our students to know when they leave. And we can show them, and here's the evidence to show that they know it. And that's, that's a game changer.
Indeed, yeah. Chris had mentioned when he first came on board, he had, we were having a conversation. He said, Alma is on the precipice of great things. And we're literally a year later executing a lot of really wonderful things. I'm excited.
This, this work was designed by our teacher team, our principals. Mark, Julie, and Sunshine have built their teacher teams. The teacher teams really kind of set out and said, these are the things we need to do and crammed it out. But I think Bernadette and Ryan really nailed the big change in, in that the emphasis isn't on what our teachers doing in the classroom. Right? The emphasis is we're shifting our focus to students. It's what are students learning? And can we show what students are learning? Because that's really what we're in the business at. We're not in the business of teaching. We're in the business of students learning. Teaching is how learning happens. There's a lot of ways in which learning happens. And it's, it's really shifting that focus. And, and that's a pretty radical focus to say, in Alma, we prioritize student learning.
And so, yes, all of this is student-centered. That's, that's the beauty of it. And if you ask a lot of your previous graduates, you know, there are two things that always stick out. If you ask them, how relevant was the work that you did? And what did you, what did you learn? What did you know? You know, they, you probably wouldn't like the answer in a lot of cases. But, but we're talking about shifting that.
Yeah.
And, and empowering students. This is all about student empowerment.
I think, I think with my own teenagers, the comment that I get is certain, most specifically to math. Will I use this later on? That to me seems to be like a question that is just very normal for kids to ask of their parents. But I don't look at it as, yes, it's just what you have to learn, go do it. I literally had this conversation with my son last night and said, not, not is it just a requirement? However, this tells me that you're hungry to learn some things and you just need to know a better grounding of why. And that might be a different pathway of learning. That might be a different experience in the classroom. And so I think if we are, if we're scratching off that top of that and flipping it on its head, it's a good thing.
And, and part of the work that the leadership, the teacher teams are doing is asking that, that question. You know, students will always know what they're learning and why they're learning and what the relevance is, as well as what they're, how they're being valued.
Good deal. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This is really valuable information and it helps me build my head around the the side that we're on. I, I don't know about you guys, but I wasn't really sure what our role was or how we were really going to be very involved in, in a little bit more intimate way. And so that makes more sense to me. Thank you.
Then I did it right. And, you know, as you go down this road, you know, all you have to do is communicate with Chris and say, you know, here's a spot where we could use a little bit of extra support or whatever. That's what we do.
Okay.
You know, we have no problem coming down and sitting, you know, with one, two, three, or all of you and saying, okay. What do you?
Okay.
I wouldn't mind having, if it's appropriate, any collaboration with Moses Lake as well. If, um, if their board is walking through some uncharted territory, there may be some shared learning that we might benefit mutually from. So I don't know if that's something that makes sense, but it's worth, I think, at least somewhat entertaining as we.
It totally makes sense. And because we, we work so closely with both districts, that is an easy thing to do. We're already working on the teacher-to-teacher part of that. Uh, I know that's come up, I don't know, a dozen times about, uh, people want to see Vanguard Academy in Moses Lake. It's a brand new school, literally brand, just opened up in September. Competency-based, project-based, learning, comprehensive high school.
Wow.
So it's the whole school. It only has two grades right now, ninth and 10th, but they got four hundred students in those two grades already. And their projection is it will be a nine-hundred-student high school.
What was it called?
It's called Vanguard.
Okay.
Was going to be Ronald Reagan High School.
That'd be cool. Yeah.
But yeah, so they, it'll zoom literally from the ground up, Joe. And we can definitely set up a Zoom call between the two boards. I think that would be fantastic. And in fact, we may invite a couple of others in, uh, other boards from, especially in the E S D one thirteen that are doing this mastery-based learning work. Because there is a network, kind of, sort of.
Okay.
But it's more focused on the teaching part. Quite honestly, no one's, no one's thought about the board part.
Harriet has said it. The, the, the original design on the State Board of Education Master-Based Learning Work ended up being magnet schools. And then there was a few comprehensive schools. Alma is now, we're the only whole school district in the cohort, the only one. So as a result, we're the only district faced with this issue. Because when you're getting into board policy, other school districts are needing to balance still maintaining a very traditional learning environment with, you know, their board policies.
Yeah.
We're the only, we're the only district.
And, and there are not many elementary schools. Most of them are in the secondary level. There may be two, three elementary schools, four at the most.
So I think in our region now, the remaining districts in our region is Tumwater Middle School.
Yeah.
Yes.
And Avontee High School in Olympia are the two schools in the E S D one thirteen.
Oh, right.
They're out.
Oh, that's right. They dropped out. That's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
We forge ahead.
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
So you are, you are, you will by default be the model.
We're okay with that.
Yes, we are.
You are, you're the leaders.
We're okay with that.
Okay. And when I say that to other people that Alma's leading the way, they're going to be scratching their heads going, Alma? That's the place.
Yeah, that's great.
Be there.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Have safe travels back. I appreciate it.
Sorry, I took so long.
It sounds like Alma is the place to be.
Alma is the place. I know, one hundred and sixty FTE. Yeah, that's a lot. Harriet, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Harriet has been working with our teacher teams now for
Since, at least since August.
So, um, Harriet, um, we brought, Harriet came on board with Josh Meek and, uh, and Phil Crocker, because Harriet really closed the gap on our unique needs, which is this policy work. I mean, and that's really where Alma started. We started realizing Alma began occupying a unique space. And then with Harriet's role on the State Board of Education and within school boards, we knew that, um, this became an interesting, um, gap that we didn't have any support with. And there weren't other districts who actually could satisfy this gap. So then, uh, Phil and Josh brought Harriet on board and just really appreciated Harriet's work.
Yeah.
So.
Indeed.
All right.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do communications and comments. I think we have anybody from E T O? E E S P? E C O P A? Admin? I do not have any registered persons to be heard or public comments. We'll move into new business. We have approval, uh, for Mr. Nesman to attend the A A S A conference in February, uh, the sixteenth through the eighteenth in San Antonio.
This is predominantly actually for our Learning Twenty Twenty Five meeting. This is one of our two in-person meetings a year. So I'm looking mainly to go to, go to our Learning Twenty Twenty Five, which is the National Superintendent's Association work on reinventing the school system. Um, and there's actually your Twenty Twenty Five to report to the National Superintendent's, uh, to the U S Department of Education. So that's, that's the impetus for attending this conference.
I make a motion for the approval for Christopher Nesman to attend the A A S A conference, February sixteenth to the eighteenth, twenty twenty-three in San Antonio.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval for the M O U with Pierce County Careers Connection for C T E Dual Credit articulations for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
This is just the agreement for the Pierce Call, uh, Pierce County Colleges for us to, uh, award, uh, the dual credit, uh, the college credit for the students enrolled in our current education courses.
I'll move the approval, the M O U for with Pierce County Careers Connection for C T E Dual Credit articulations for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
I'll second that. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, yeah. Uh, let's see. Um, I don't know what this says and I apologize. Does it say enrollment?
Yeah, it is enrollment. I don't have the link here, but we've spoken about it quite a bit. We are up over a hundred and sixty student FTE. We just had, actually, four new students enroll. So we are at about sixteen hundred. Oh, goodness, I don't have it here. It's not, it's dead. About sixteen hundred and sixty student FTE. And we are growing and we're growing fast and we're continuing to grow. So it seems to be each month we'll just have continued climbing enrollment. And we are, we are closed, um, definitely at the elementary and middle school. We don't have anywhere left to have any students go. I think the link isn't there. I know Lisa is closing our books, so I don't.
I know, we had, we had, uh, quite a few numbers that were, uh, resembled what you're speaking of at the last meeting. I suppose if anybody needs those before the next meeting, you can call the office.
There it is. Hang on.
Perfect.
Sure. Sorry, there you go. We were October fifteen hundred ninety-six thirty-six, um, with open doors, six hundred forty-one thirty-six. That is actually, uh, we are six hundred twenty-one in our September FTE. And our projected enrollment had us at fifteen hundred nine, just over. So we're dramatically larger. So we are up seventeen point four six FTE just from the month. So we're up just shy of eighteen students, seventeen and a half students just from the beginning of school in the month of September. So we are growing and it looks like November enrollment will show a similar growth.
Wow.
So. I don't know where they're going to go.
This is your new classroom?
Yeah. Don't joke.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to superintendent report, please.
Yeah, you'll also notice, and it should be attached in the next board meeting, but we have our Friday superintendent reports that are actually back and moving again. We had a team, actually, Phil and Christie were able to make their way to Chicago for the Redefining Ready. They came back, were actually getting ready to launch a Redefining Ready. It was our Career College Readiness Initiative tied to the National Superintendent's Association as we're framing out our different group. So different career college readiness pathways and how we're looking at our opportunity to increase our dual credit rate. Um, as actually Harriet messaged, mentioned before, we had Andel Hook, Laura Nelson, and Mark Kitty for in Denver, Colorado, learning from Robert Marzano, Dr. Robert Marzano himself, on how to build out our new mastery-based learning initiative. So we're just really excited that our people are learning from the best. And then, um, I was asked to be a keynote speaker for the State C T Director Conference. And then I was asked to be a keynote speaker next month for the State STEM Conference on the work that's happening in Alma. So, um, it was exciting to talk about how almost the career college readiness work, how we built it out, how it ties this mastery-based learning work. And having the ability to share this work with other school districts really wanting to learn from Alma. So it's so interesting, like we've just started and then we're already having a lot of requests to come in and keynote conferences. I think there's about two hundred C T directors at the, uh, last week on Monday. And I think they're expecting about five hundred people at the STEM Conference. And that was at the Great Wolf Watch. So I won't actually need to be out of district. Just co-present, come back. So about five hundred attendees really looking to learn from the Alma School District. Um, and then I was blessed to have Grace Smith be the opening speaker for the State C T Director Conference, which is always a mixed bag because Grace is such an incredible speaker. I'm always like, oh darn, now I need to finish Grace. But Grace did, um, did a great job talking about the need for, you know, as she sees from a student perspective on our need. And as we know, Grace is the National Skills USA President and, uh, Stephanie's daughter, so, um, and Eric's daughter. So Grace did a great job introducing the career tech, you know, from a student perspective on the need for getting students essential skills for where they're going in their future. So, um, I don't know, we've had a lot of really, really good things go on, so.
And I just on a quick note, can I ask, how is the A S E program going?
Um, I don't, I think we're running. I mean, so I do know that we are trying to, one of the ideas that we have from the Redefining Ready Group was actually having a college preparedness center. So, um, I think there's some conversations on how can we have our students that are a part of the Arizona State University Partnership really feel like they're college students? Because these students are enrolled in university. They're dual enrolled in Alma High School and, and Arizona State University. And are we creating an environment to give our students this feeling of, you actually currently are a university student? So, um, District two fourteen in Chicago was actually a district I was able to visit a few years ago where I saw the Arizona State University Partnership. So I know Bill and Christie got a chance to see where I got the idea from. That's where we got the idea, um, to launch an Arizona State University Partnership. So I know they came back on, we really need to have a center for our dual credit students to really make it so that they, they get a feel that they're university students. Not just that I'm at Alma High School taking a much more, like a more rigorous Alma High School class. And do I get to feel like I'm a university student? Because I am a university student.
I don't know that that resonates with them that way. I think that's, that's a good point. I like that. Student, you call that a college readiness center?
Yes. So that was, uh, one of the, uh, big takeaways. They came back and said, hey, we need to have a meeting with you. But our goal is Alma High School and East Grace Harbor High School. As a, as a district, we will be the best district in preparing students for whatever they do next. And the best way to prepare students for whatever they do next is to not just have a, a, a cliff face. Right? It's, it's what can we do to have students begin transitioning into the next phase of their life while we still have the ability to hold their hands? So, and that's what we've done with our registered apprenticeship work. And that's really what we want to do now with our college readiness work. If these students are enrolled in a university, then they should have some of the ability to see what it's like or experience or feel like university students while we're kind of holding their hand through this university experience. So that was the first, we need to have a meeting. We need to talk about this because it shouldn't be you graduate and now you're in university. It should be, you're in university now. And how, what are we doing to make you fully appreciate your university? And this isn't just our Arizona, Arizona State University Partnership. This would be representative of all of our university dual credit opportunities. But they saw through the, the District two fourteen Arizona State University Partnership, they came back and said, how can we make this, help our students acknowledge and feel that you are a university student, even though you're still here in Alma?
Um, Chris, you know, clearly, all these changes and philosophies, I am excited about seeing how they come to fruition. So is it possible, like, the springtime? So is it possible, like the springtime, that we can get some of these kids that are doing their apprenticeship? Or the A S U program to have them come and report to the board about how things went for them? Both the positive and the, and maybe the negative of this change for them and this, uh, learning for them. Uh, because I think as a board, we need to know, do we need to adjust policies, you know? Based on, if we're really truly focused on students, we need to know how it's going for the students, from the students themselves.
How about January eleventh and April twelfth?
Sounds great.
Perfect.
Great idea, Harriet.
Oh, is that all of our thing?
It's not, but I mean, he's got the kids' focus, so he can work that in there. From, from that specific.
I see focus on kids.
For that specific.
Yeah, see, it wasn't, yeah, it was not specifically defined what we'd be hearing about. It was going to be where, those are the meeting dates that we have set up for Alma High School and East Grace Harbor High School to hear from our students and what is going on with our students. I think with your recommendation, it's just easy to go to those principals and say, for that presentation specifically, the board would like to see how these are. How is this working?
I'm glad I was able to help.
You did, you added depth. You made it, you, you brought it all together.
Although I, I would like to, it's not a critique, but it's something I, I would prefer to see on the agenda. Um, I know this has E H S focus on kids. I'd really rather replace kids with students.
Okay.
I just feel like it's appropriate to, these are young adults.
Young adults. I like that.
Yeah. Okay, right, perfect. Thank you. Um, I don't know if we have Delaney here tonight.
Uh, Delaney.
Negative.
Delaney is a couple doors down from me currently and it is eleven fifteen at night for us.
Pass, pass for Delaney.
I know they are already in bed, but they did arrive safely. Um, I saw Eric go out for a bit and help unload them all. Um, so they are ready for their competition to kick off tomorrow.
Please offer them all of our best wishes and thoughts. How exciting. And I only suspect you are like videoing and picturing like mad.
Um, yeah, I don't know. This will be a new thing for all of us, but, um, so I also want to apologize for jumping back and forth and having the camera on. We were trying to, uh, get everybody brought in and unloaded and, uh, officials out of suitcases and whatnot. So, um, thank you for letting me still make the board meeting, but triage a bit on this end.
Thank you for being here and making the time. Um, we're going to go ahead and, um, move into executive session for about fifteen minutes, um, to review the public employee. And then when we come back, there'll be no action taken. We'll come back in a minute.